Welcome everyone to the Benton City City Council Meeting, the first one and the new year. And I will call the meeting to order. So, welcome to our new council members and our guests and to our returning council member, Mr. Sandretto, who was re-elected, and the other council that are here. So, the meeting is called to order and the first order of business will be the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Wadsworth.
Here.
Councilman Sandretto.
Here.
Councilman Mokler.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Here.
They are all present.
Thank you. Jessica, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, moving on now to the consent agenda, which contains our regular meeting minutes from December 21st and bills and communications. So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I would like to remove the bills and communications from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay, well then, I guess we will have to start over. Do I have a motion to approve the regular minutes from December 21st?
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Gordon, aye.
Mokler, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Reed, aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, bills and communications, you had something you wanted to ask about Mr. Mokler.
The first item is mileage reimbursement for JB.
Yes, he, he has to go to Prosser for taking our bank account deposits. We can no longer bank in Benton City, so he gets reimbursed for that.
I understand, is there not a city vehicle available for his use? That would be safer if he were to be in a car accident, it'd be covered under the city insurance.
Well, we'll have to work on that, we do not have an extra city vehicle.
Second item I wanted to inquire about was reimbursement to you Linda for computer replacement parts.
Yes, our code enforcement's computer has been giving us a hard time and I had spoken with Shane about what it needed and so, since it was a, I believe it was a Friday, I went ahead and went over there and picked up the parts so that they could be, have a new hard drive installed.
Wasn't that purchased on a city account versus your personal account?
Yes, no, not that one, that one was not, that was on my personal.
I understand, that's why I asked why it was not.
Because it was like a Friday night and I went over and got it. Not to hold things up.
Is JB's no longer taking the truck home at night?
No, code enforcement does.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Correction on that, code enforcement does not take it, she leaves it at the shop and gets it in the morning.
Okay. All right. I will accept a motion to approve the bills and communications.
I saw a motion to approve the bills and communications.
Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Okay, was that Mrs. Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All in favors, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler, aye.
Gordon, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Stand right away.
Reed, aye.
Okay. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, the next item is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I don't know that I necessarily have a change, however, should we not discuss the planning commission applicants in executive session?
I guess we could, I hadn't thought we needed to, but we, we could, I believe we can Jeff, we didn't, we do have a different topic on on the agenda for executive session.
Madam, I can look at the executive session statute real quickly here, I believe there is a provision in there detailing with or discussing particular qualifications of candidate, so there may be provision there for this type of issue, just a moment.
Yes, there is one, but we haven't announced it, that's what I was concerned about.
Right, so it need to be added to the agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, to evaluate the qual, so under subsection G, so under RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1G to evaluate qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee. And then, so that's dealing with employees, if you look at just one step down in H to evaluate qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. I don't know that that fits because the planning commission isn't an elective office. My understanding is that our planning commission is strictly by appointment, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's, Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
It's per BCMC, it's appointment for, by the mayor and confirmed by city council.
Right, but that's not elective office.
No, sir, it's not. It is a voluntary position.
I think it's, it's, it's close to the executive session statute, but it's not, it doesn't look like it would fit within that rubric under 1H evaluating the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office.
So, does that mean we are not adding an executive session for planning?
It doesn't need to be added as an executive session item now.
It can be done in open, open council.
Okay, then, Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler, aye.
Gordon, aye.
Reed, aye.
Wadsworth, aye.
Stand right away.
Okay, thank you, motion carries. We now have time for visitors' comments for non-agenda items only, and they are limited to three minutes. Has anyone requested to speak for the visitor's comments section?
Madam Mayor, I did not receive any request except for the report we have on there.
Okay, thank you. So, then we can move on to the regular reports. I believe we have some of the staff reports, I thought, but we do not have any staff reports?
No ma'am, we only have Benton Franklin.
Okay, okay, Mr. Barlow, it looks like you will be giving your presentation now on the Benton Franklin Transit Plans.
Thank you, we're pretty excited to be able to do this. I believe that Melda was going to share her screen so we could run through the slides.
Be happy to, but the host needs to enable screen sharing, please.
And I'd just like to mention that we have three of our steering team members on this meeting itself. We have Shane, Madam Mayor, and we have Dakota Redd, so they're a little bit familiar with what we're going to talk about tonight and have been active in helping us get this thing rolling. As you see, Benton City Transit Improvement Study, it's a two-year-long process, we were just finishing up the community engagement phase. We wanted to share what we had been able to evaluate from the materials we got from the survey, interviews we did, and the steering team meetings themselves. And as you'll notice on the right, we have a poster that's really targeted towards a commitment we made from the beginning, which was we would not treat Prosser and Benton City as a combined unit, but we'd separate them and really look at them as a unique jurisdiction. We can move on. So, really quickly, we heard bus frequency every two hours is painful and not effective. I've got to minimize my, there we go, okay. And not effective when you're trying to plan work school and essential trips. Survey results show that most often people travel to Queensgate for their essential and leisure services and we'll see a particular chart on that, which is really good news because the Queensgate hub is tentatively going to be completed in 2023 and we'll be able to start to use that as a link to get people up to Benton City and Prosser. We heard improved information about transit services and travel training is needed. We got a lot of those comments from people that we met at the senior center. Peer transit agencies conferred that multiple transportation options serve rural trip needs and so we would like to make sure that as we move into the planning phase that we start to look at being as coordinated as we can with human service and public transportation as well as promoting ride share, van pool, and working very closely with the school transportation so that we can do best to serve the needs of the kids and we'll see later on, especially in the after-school programs. There is a community interest in on-demand services like BFT Connect and possibly even electric bikes and scooters to connect the bus stops and make many more shorter trips. In '22, we'll develop a five-year rolling plan specifically for Benton City improvements. We'll do, I just wanted to reinforce that development patterns help to guide where we go with the bus routes and zoning and comprehensive plan can play into that scenario because we always like to look to the future. Higher density and compact development along existing and future bus routes will make transit operate more efficiently. And we're very important, very interested in the efficiency part. This is a little map that Nicole made for us. She's doing the urban planning work for the city of Benton and it just sort of gives us an idea of really some big things that are happening in the area. We added on the AVA void along SR 224 because there was some interesting conversations about using the 224 to come into town. And one thing to note here, you know, everything that is development creates traffic and transit is just a subset of that travel. So, as you see, the development in the core is pretty much the way it has been for quite a while and we don't see any significant changes on this map. But that means that we'll probably be looking at the existing service that we have throughout town and just double checking on are we in the right locations? Are we serving the points of interest? And we'll do more of that in the planning study. And I'm going to turn this over at the next slide. I'll turn this over to Matt, who's been leading our survey and survey analysis and I'll just let him take off with this slide and see where we go.
Thanks Bill, yeah, I'm Matt Ragsdale, I'm the Travel Development Reduction Specialist/Planning Analyst and I have been heading a lot of the survey handling on this project. So, what you see here is sort of a graphic, graphic representation of our Excel data as it came out of the survey. And it's essentially showing, you know, where are people from Benton City going and coming to? So, as we can see here, we've got essentially, there's a minor inflow of people coming into Benton City. Primarily, we see Prosser, West Richland, Richland as coming into Benton City. Additionally, we see that the amount of workers, so employment for folks who are going into and out of Benton City routines attracts just as many workers as we see going to other destinations such as Hanford, Richland, Kennewick, and Pasco. Hanford, I can't recall how many van pools they used to have before COVID, but the van pool program as we have it now, we have 76 vans. So, you know, pre-COVID, we had a lot more vans and additionally more coming out of the Benton City area to the Hanford area. And we also, as we, you know, Bill said at the beginning here, and I think this is something not a lot of us will be surprised about, is that a lot of folks from the Benton City area are going to the Queensgate area for essential leisure services. So, this question on the survey, we wanted to know where folks are going for essential leisure, work, and school. And not surprising, you see a lot of folks going to Queensgate area, but also Richland Mall area and the Gage Boulevard area for essential leisure services. So, yeah, I think there's a, I don't know if we're doing questions after or as they come up, but if we can go to the next slide. Cool, so this is more data pulled from the survey and this is how folks are getting to different services. So, how are you getting to your medical appointments, your bank, your school, your work, et cetera? Additionally, no surprise, we see a lot of people are driving alone. Right now, the 170 you get to Queensgate, you have to make a connection at Knight Street. And as we said, services every two hours, so that can't always be a reliable way for folks to get places on the bus, even though we have, you know, you know, upwards of 10 people riding the bus to get to certain services, but driving alone is a primary way people who took our survey are getting around in and out of Benton City. Share ride here, this, Bill, did you include van pool in the share ride or is that just like carpooling and like driving with friends and family, I can't remember?
Sorry, I muted, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yes, no, this, this share ride I combined, like, if you see here in the fun, you know, people doing entertainment, that's generally, you know, just riding with their friends or whatever. So, when there's more than two people in the car, basically is a share ride.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, so, but yeah, so we see the primary way people are getting to where they need to go in the, from the Benton City area is they're driving alone. So, yeah, so then the next slide sort of elaborates on that. So, this question on our survey asks, you know, on the left, this donut graph here asks, how often do you ride the bus? And a lot of people who took our survey are not riding the bus ever, so 42% are saying they were never riding the bus, followed by varied or infrequently, it was 28% of respondents. So, we asked an additional question, which is this graph on the right. Why aren't you riding the bus or what would need to change for you to ride the bus more frequently? And a lot of them answered a stop access, maybe folks didn't have a stop nearby or at their start or their destination. Frequency again was another big issue, you know, every two hours, it's hard to make that a reliable way for you to get anywhere, especially to like fix schedules or invaried schedules, you know, if you don't want to be two hours earlier, an hour early to work or school, if you don't have to be. So, you know, that's a bit hard for folks to get behind. Information was a big one, not a lot of people had information about their options or riding the bus in general or what the 170, where you could get on, where you could get off. Only 23% of our respondents had any sort of familiarity with their service options. So, yeah, and then early and late hours, the 170 does not run terribly early or terribly late. There's also no Sunday service if I remember correctly. So, that leaves out a lot of people who might want to ride the bus early, late, or maybe on the weekends. And then essential routes, again, the Queensgate area is not serviced by the 170 right now, but in the future it will be, but in all, there's hard for people to make connections from where they're starting in Benton City and where they're trying to end up in potentially Tri-Cities area with respect to the 170. So, all in all, we see a lot of people driving alone to where they need to go. And so, yeah, so that's, that's my little bit on the survey, so thank you guys so much.
Yeah, I, I'd like to just add that actually we were pretty happy that we did get a lot of non-riders. That was really the intention of this survey and doing it in a broadcast. We can collect a lot of data onboard the bus, which we will do in the next phase and we have tons of data about this, the general demand and dial-a-ride service. So, I think it's pretty important that we recognize that together, these services provide actually far more trips than 170 does for the people that Benton City stops. So, it is really important that we dig into that material which we have and we do have a lot of data because even the general demand people have to register in order to make bookings on the system. So, it's going to be one thing that we really mine and try to understand. As you'll hear a bit when Eric speaks, they have pretty much phased out the general demand in the Tri-Cities. So, that's a trend, it's something you're probably going to see in the future. But we'd really like to look at general demand and see who uses it and how they like it before we start to look at even other options in the micro-transit world. So, just looking here, you know, we see the general demand is the large part of the riders that you see on the DAR vehicles today, which are the dialer rides. ADA is a small percentage of those and also looking at the data even preliminarily, I've noticed that, you know, there's regular people that ride, there might be 100 people that make most of the trips. They're also allowed to make subscription trips, which are extremely convenient because once you've made your subscription, it stays active as long as you're an active rider. If you violate your notifications and lose your rights, well, it's on you, but it's very convenient when you set it up. It is, as you see on the right-hand side, a relatively, comparatively, I should say, affordable trip at 28, 25 and passenger hour. And that's much better than the general ADA because we're able to put more people on the vehicle. We get 4.56 passengers per vehicle hour. And I'm using 2018 data here specifically because back then we had the Tri-Cities taxi doing the general demand in the Tri-City, so it was easy to separate the data at that point. After they went out of business, it became hard, so I had to go back a few years to get this data. But we are going to look at this very closely and understand how any changes to general demand might affect service in Benton City. We can roll on. And Eric, you're up.
Sure, so, my apologies there, just the my, my, my camera just stopped, apologies for that. So, currently what you're seeing right here is as we think about the connectivity of Benton City into the broader Tri-Cities area and even out towards, towards Prosser, really what we want to focus on is the, is the best way to provide the most direct access to the most popular destinations. And what we see here is, this is currently the most direct connections, one-stop connections that can be made on our existing fixed route services from Route 170. You can see Route 170 there in orange and then connecting at Knight Street in downtown Richland. We can see that there's pretty extensive access all over the Tri-Cities. However, the way that the 170 is currently structured, we don't feel is, is very optimal for obvious reasons, including frequency, but also the connectivity to the most popular destinations is a bit limited. And this is where I would like to pop in and share my screen if possible. Let me see if I can do that here very quickly.
There we are.
Making sure everyone can see that, okay, good. So, really, as, as we think about connectivity from Benton City on, on our fixed route services and as well as on our connect and general demand service, there's a few big things that we're considering for the next one to three years and potentially even further out a little than that, depending on some variables. The biggest and most immediate service change that will impact Route 170 and Benton City is the implementation of our Queensgate Transit Center, which is something that Bill has touched on a bit. This is expected to come online sometime in, in mid to late 2023. And really, the purpose of our Queensgate Transit Center is to provide a lot more direct and easy access from Benton City and Prosser and West Richland into the Columbia Center area, the Clearwater Avenue area in downtown Richland without having to backtrack into Knight Street. And really, what we see the Queensgate Transit Center really being most useful for is as a, a transfer point to our connect service. I'm not sure how many of you might be familiar with our connect service. Essentially, it is our on-demand last mile feeder service and it's something that was rolled out in May of 2020, which is not a great time to roll out a service for obvious reasons. It's had some growing pains, but currently we've, we've experienced a lot of, a lot of demand and a lot of interest in connect. And as of right now, connect is broken into six zones throughout the Tri-Cities. And the way the Queensgate Transit Center will work is that it will be on the border of two zones, the West Richland Zone and the Columbia Center Zone, meaning that riders could go from the Queensgate Transit Center anywhere into, into Kennewick, down into the Columbia Center Boulevard area, Clearwater Avenue area, you know, even as far as, as far east as 395 in, in Kennewick and could also go up into West Richland as well. And so, this really provides a lot more direct connectivity to the, the nodes that we know are most popular beyond just our fixed route services. We do intend to have fixed route connections here as well. So, from Queensgate, riders can easily transfer for a, a one-stop ride into Richland, any points in Richland or really any points is further into Kennewick as well. And the other significant thing that we see impacting service in West Richland is the Route 224 corridor. And this is an ongoing project with the city of West Richland and Washdott to, to make some enhancements on this corridor and really promote, promote and open up a lot of land for development. We see that as a bit of a catalyst for rethinking how we do service in Benton City itself. And, you know, these, these are sort of preliminary ideas on our part based on sort of our operational needs and our, our operational constraints. And uh you know, these these are sort of preliminary ideas on our part based on sort of our operational needs and our our operational constraints. As well as rider demand and what we might think will work best to provide a good uh increased level of service. So with a a kind of anticipated rapid development of of commercial and residential along the two twenty-four corridor. Uh between West Richland and Benton City, um we are, we kind of envisioned an extension of some of our fixed route services. Down the Route two twenty-four corridor and into Benton City. And and what that would mean essentially is that uh the current Route one seventy would not do it it its existing loop in Benton City. Where it goes into downtown and then up up towards the high school. Uh in s- instead, a- and again, this is sort of a high-concept idea on our part. Is that Route one seventy would utilize um the existing park and ride right um right off of the I eighty-two exit there to. Um to 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 pull in quickly, pick up any any riders or allow for a direct transfer or mid-route transfer. And then immediately get back on the highway going either towards the Queensgate Transit Center or out towards Prosser. Um we we would also li- like to see to have that park and ride become more of a connection point. Um and to provide more frequency on the fixed route loop that runs through Benton City itself. That currently runs hourly, but uh the way that it is structured within the one seventy means that riders going east or west. Might have a difficult time making that work for them. Uh so really, we would like to to rethink this as kind of an extension of an existing fixed route service. That would let riders within Benton City either connect directly to the one seventy. Or travel up Route two twenty-four into West Richland and then down into downtown Richland and Queensgate. Uh through our our West Richland Flat Top Transit Center. Um and another big thing that we would like to see this park and ride utilized for is as a potential um connecting point. For our connect service, which we would like to see expand into Benton City and Prosser within the next couple of years. We don't have a concrete timeline on that, but it's something that we we have set as a goal for ourself. Um connect is already fully rolled out within the Tri-Cities itself, but uh Benton City and Prosser are kind of big gaps in the connect network. Uh as of right now, what you can see on this blue line here, you really can't get any further west than, you know, parts of Keen. Keen Boulevard in in West Richland, so that that's kind of the limit of the service, the app. The the connect app won't let riders book trips outside of that zone. So it really leaves uh Benton City and Prosser kind of kind of excluded. And we see that as an opportunity again to kind of integrate Benton City into our into our fixed route transit service for the Tri-Cities itself. Um we'd also like to potentially focus, and I think Bill will touch on this a little bit more, um on stop improvements within Benton City. We 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 think that our stops themselves are in good locations for the most part, uh with the exceptions of a few locations downtown. Uh but we'd like to enhance those stops, make them a little bit more visible and accessible and then kind of inviting to to encourage more people to to potentially use the service. Um and so that is sort of a high-level summary of our i- our preliminary recommendations. Based on our survey data and some other factors. I'm happy to to take any questions now, or if we want to wait and do that after Bill has has finished up.
Yeah, let's go on, I think there's only like one more slide and then we'll have a little.
Sure, I'll I'll stop, I'll stop sharing here and then I'll let I'll let Bill take take over again.
Okay, if we could jump back there, okay, uh. You know, we've already started, uh we were working with Public Works in Benton City and had a couple shelters that we were able to get up. And put up, this is basically the look of the new shelters that we're putting up. Uh those are the new uh garbage cans we're using, and we have not done any uh benches yet. But we are a little bit hamstrung because we can't make a lot of improvements on sites unless we make the improvement that we install. Fully ADA compliant, so we were able to hit areas where there was already a a pad available. And we were able to put new shelters there. Uh we've got enough to do more stops. Uh it certainly will will look in our program and see where we can put these after we do that analysis of do we have all the stops in the right place. Uh and then we'll also have to program some concrete in different locations to uh be able to install stuff. But it's it's very much uh a combination, if you see down in the lower right. It takes a lot of concrete to do this right. And we need what they call a continuous path of travel from the stop. So that when someone does get off, they're able with ADA uh access to get where they need to go. So we know it can't be everywhere, and uh there are ADA transition plans that allow us to do some things. If we know where the improvements will be made in the future to make it contiguous. So we'll be spending a lot of time in Benton City, basically is what I'm saying. We'll be spending a lot more time in Benton City over the course of this next year, working out the details of the plan. And we'll be able to present a schedule when we come to the end of that study period. Uh you'll also note in the picture in the uh left-hand corner at the bottom, uh our typical bus stop sign. We have already uh agreed to revise the whole look of this sign. So as we do Benton City improvements, we're hoping to bring with us a whole set of new signs that'll be the same as the rest of the network. Uh so there's plenty to look forward to in the short term as well as the long term. Uh as you know, we are in throes of having a new general manager uh in the interim at the end of January. Uh Gloria Boyce will be leaving us, so she's retiring. And uh so we will have new leadership at the very top. All this that we have presented today was within the re- realm of our planning uh under her guidance. So uh I'm not saying things are gonna change drastically, I'm just saying that uh we will also have to make this presentation to our new boss. But uh I think we're really on some sound uh ground. Uh I think that we have done a, I personally am really proud of the team for what they've been able to do. In doing proper outreach and trying to get some comments, so there's one more slide. And this is what the people were telling us, and we've got actual reams of comments that people wrote in. Uh the same things you heard during the presentation, we'd really like to do something about the frequency. Uh late and early night, we actually asked the question on late and a lot of people wrote in, hey, I also need a early trip. But uh Kybe Bus late enough to or near enough for my sons to be able to play sports. Uh use the old inland uh Empire Highway rather than I eighty-two highway, we got several comments on this. So all of this we're listening to, you saw what Eric was presenting, they're hypotheticals. We still have to do the analysis and engineering for them, but we are looking at them and taking it seriously. We'd really like to see some big things for Benton City. That ends our formal presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bill, that was very informative, do any of the council members have uh questions for Mr. Barlow? I know that um Councilman Stady had put a lot of work into this and I'm sure you're gonna miss her there. Uh but tonight on our agenda, we will be um trying to appoint someone um to fill her slot. So that uh business can go on for you guys.
Yes, uh I'd also like to recognize uh Kevin Sliger had joined us earlier, I don't know if he's, yeah, he's still on. And he is the uh mastermind of our Queensgate Transit Center. So if you, if you want to make sure it's beautiful, you could talk to Kevin.
Yeah, thank you, Bill, uh good to be here tonight, and yeah, I I had um kind of came in early today and heard uh. Um that being spoken about and and really the idea of that location is. You, we know that Queensgate really is the commercial hub for a lot of these uh Benton City, West Richland, Prosser, a lot of the um. Outlying areas in in Benton County, so we're really trying to just make that uh bring people into that area. Um so yeah, that was the thought behind the signing process there, so yeah, that that project's moving along and uh look for it to be um completed in twenty twenty-three.
Great, well, thank you very much for attending and uh showing this to us. Um I'm not hearing any uh council comments, um so I guess with that uh we will just move on. And thank you again for for your time and energy in this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um we will now, uh we have no uh public hearings this evening. So we'll move on to item H one, uh which is Ordinance ten thirty-three, second reading. Uh amending the Benton City Municipal Code Title Five, entitled Business Licenses and Regulations. And um who will be talking about this will be Rebecca or um the attorneys?
Um Madam Mayor, uh I'm sure uh our city clerk could speak to this, but I would um like to just handle a housekeeping matter before we move forward. Um in reviewing uh the packet in preparation for this evening's meeting, I did note that. Uh and if council would look at their packets at uh Ordinance ten uh thirty-three at uh page six. Um under subsection five point zero four point zero six zero, subpart C. Um there's language there as follows, quote, "In criminal proceedings for violation of this title." Comma, "The person charged shall have the burden of coming forth with sufficient evidence to show that he is exact, period. So much evidence as will raise a reasonable doubt is sufficient for a finding of not guilty, period." Now, this is language from uh the original ordinance, I believe, back in nineteen eighty-one. Somehow that got got by the first reading, but that is obviously an inappropriate provision that should not be included in this version. So if council does choose to move forward and adopt, um I and I've reviewed in its entirety the remainder of this ordinance, this is the only problematic provision that I found. Um certainly, I'd be happy to answer questions as to why that would uh need to be removed, but I think it's relatively obvious. Um I think the intent behind this probably originally was to uh maybe uh deal with that as a col- as a collateral. Uh parallel administrative process, but it's somewhat redundant in that respect. Because throughout the ordinance, it's clear that the licensing officer has the authority to approve or deny a license. And one of the bases for a denial would be a violation of this title, which may or may not lead to a a criminal proceeding. So if anyone has any specific questions about that, I'd be happy to answer those.
So what is the process then, we would.
So the the process would be um to uh in the event that council uh agrees to approve the remainder, the balance. Of uh the of the ordinance ten thirty-three, um the appropriate course would be to uh adopt that ordinance. With the stricken provision five point zero four point zero six zero subsection C.
Okay, so they can do that by motion then?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, are there any other questions on this uh ordinance or any discussion? If not, um I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I don't know the exact verbiage on that motion, but I saw motion as Craig had suggested about um. Uh leaving out that particular piece.
Section five point oh four point six zero, section C.
Zero six zero, correct, subsection C.
No second.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Oh, Gloria.
Wadsworth aye.
Reed aye.
Andrew aye.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Um so now we are all set and we can just remove this from the um language and we don't have to go through another reading. Is that my correct understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
No, that that's that's correct.
Okay.
The ordinance would just be uh pu- published uh without that reference of five point zero four point zero six zero subsection C.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um now moving on to new business, we have um I believe Mr. Rainey is going to speak about the permit surveying. Uh proposal for boundary line adjustments for Dyna Lane and uh the Bricker Properties. Mr. Rainey.
Yes, good evening, um so before you, we have a a quote proposal from permit surveying to do the boundary line adjustment. And that is on the properties along Seventh Street. About a year ago, the purchase-sales agreement was uh written up and signed by the city uh for this work. So what what's gonna happen is we're gonna do boundary line adjustment to realign Dyna Lane with uh Dale Avenue. And that's at the intersection there on Seventh, and so we're gonna use that road for the entrance road to the wastewater treatment plant, the city shop. And the uh new city park, the Riverfront Park. And uh.
It has been a long haul.
Yeah, yeah. And in the uh purchase-sales agreement that was signed, um it stated that we had four years to basically uh realign. Dyna Lane to Dale Avenue and move the the water and sewer into that right away and uh. Make a new access road along that point. So I guess uh if there's any questions, I'd be happy to hear.
Hearing no questions, um I would entertain a motion.
I'm trying to get it up so I can read it, Madam Mayor, hang on.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I moved to approve proposal submitted by permit surveying Inc. for boundary line adjustment in Dyna Lane. Into Bricker Properties in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars.
Do I have a second? Okay, Gordon seconds, I believe that was Mrs. Gordon.
It was Wadsworth.
It was Miss Wadsworth, okay, I can't tell your voices apart yet. Okay, um uh all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Reed aye.
Oh, Gloria aye.
Oh, Gordon aye.
Wadsworth aye.
Andrew aye.
Okay, motion carries.
It will. Okay, thank you, I'll I'll inform my permit surveying, and with that, I don't see any other items uh that I'm involved with tonight. So with your permission, Mayor, I'd like to sign off.
It's fine. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, the next item is the appointment of the planning commission. And. We received for. Oh, yes.
Actually, the next item is mayor pro temp selection. And then the planning commission.
Okay, it's opposite on my on my. Sheet here. So. We can do the mayor pro temp selection next if you would like. So do we have any nominations for mayor pro temp?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Gordon.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to nominate Councilman Billy.
Well, I'll have to ask the attorneys how we go through this. Mr. Briggs, can you tell us how we solve this?
Yes, ma'am. I apologize. If, so there's been a suggested appointment of Councilmember Gordon. Correct, and also. Suggested appointment of Councilmember Reed. So. Let me look quickly. My thought is that I interest their vine proposition of mayor pro temp. That's going to require an affirmative majority vote of council.
So do we do them individually?
That would be my suggestion. Let me, I'm just looking quickly at our statute here.
Mr. Briggs, do we have to get like a second on Gordon and a second on Reed?
Right. So under R C W thirty-five A twelve point zero six five. By any, by any Lee, at the first meeting of a new council or periodically, the members thereof. By majority vote may designate one of their number as mayor pro temp or deputy mayor for such period as the council may specify. To serve in the absence or temporary disability of the mayor. Or in lieu thereof, the council may as the need may rise appoint any qualified person to serve as mayor pro temp or a. In the absence or temporary disability of the mayor. Thirty-five A twelve. It's mayor council plan of government. Which obviously were a part as a code city. So my my thought here is that. An individual council member would submit a motion for appointment. Again, that would take a second. And then a vote. So in this instance, for those two individual suggestions to. Be subject to a vote would both require a motion and a second by an individual council member.
Okay, so stepping back to Mrs. Gordon's recommendation.
Suggestion.
Yes, do we have a second for Mrs. Gordon? Hearing none? I guess. Yes.
I'm assuming that myself and Councilmember Reed are are not able to vote on either of these. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that Councilmember Reed and I cannot vote or for a second on either of these motions. Is that correct?
I don't know. Can you clarify, Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, so let me look under our ethics, R C W.
Because essentially, we would just be waiting on Mr. Sandrato to make a decision. That's not accurate.
Under forty-two twenty-three. Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a, there would be a probit. I think the question here is can. Councilmember Gordon second the motion for her own nomination as mayor pro temp. I don't see that as an ethical issue under. Forty-two twenty-three, which prohibits. Essentially. Financial interests in contracts. So that if council were. Were voting on a contract issue and say one of the council members owned an interest in that business. That would prevent that council member from voting on that on that matter, or if they had a remote quote, a remote interest. Under forty-two twenty-three zero four zero, and they went through certain steps, they could vote. So I don't see that as a, as being applicable here, and that's really the extent of the ethical. Prohibitions under our state statute.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
According to parliamentary procedures, if there are two nominations with a second, there is a chance for comment and discussion. And you can vote for yourself with the chair of mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go back and then Mrs. Gordon, did you want to second your nomination?
Yes, yes, I'd like to second.
Okay. All right. So then we will see if. Mr. Reed has a second. He has been nominated. Is there a second? That was by Mr. Sandrato. Okay, is there some discussion? I guess I hear none. I would think that one of the qualities would be some experience. But I don't know if that matters to the council.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I believe the mayor pro temp. Six years ago had zero experience. I believe that was a. A put forth person by you.
I don't know who that was. I'm not sure.
It would have been Councilwoman Coats. And I'm just saying that I don't think experience. In this matter. Is something that. A person can't learn. I think that we all go through a learning process. I think it's important for the new council members to dig in and participate.
I agree with that statement. They should participate. Okay, so then. Mr. Briggs, do we have a vote on each one?
I think we would, again, we would do that. I think we proceed with Council, Council. Woman Gordon's nomination. Again, that's going to require. Majority approval of the council.
Okay. So. All those in favor of voting for Councilman. Gordon, could you please signify by saying aye?
Wadsworth aye.
Gordon aye.
Okay, hearing none, the motion fails. So all those in favor of voting for. Mr. Reed, please signify by saying aye.
Mokler aye. Sandrato aye.
Reed aye.
Or didn't know? Wadsworth no.
Okay, motion carries three to two. Thank you. And did we have a new mayor pro temp? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reed, you are the mayor pro temp.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then the appointment of the planning commission. We have. Four applications. And I don't have them in front of me, but I think you have seen them in your packets. So out of the four.
Adam Mayor, there's only three.
We had four applications. And out of the four, I selected who I thought had the better qualifications. And selected three of of them. The positions. Are for for. Planning Commission position one. I would select Levi Cummins. For council position two, I have selected Sarah Funk. And for council position three. I selected Janet Lowry. So I think you have their resumes. Are there any questions on my nominations?
No questions on the nominations, Madam Mayor. I do have a question on who has all left the planning commission.
Who has left? Don Allen has left. Jessica, of course, has joined you on the council. And then Gary Robbins resigned because he did not like doing the Zoom meetings.
Madam Mayor, I motion to accept your nominations.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Reed aye.
Gordon aye.
Wadsworth aye.
Thank you. Motion carries and we have three new positions for the planning commission. Thank you. Okay. Then I have the council committee assignments. Yes, you may.
Okay, council on the assignment sheet that I posted in the packet. I left the names of the current. Council members that are on their present right now, and I took off Mrs. Ms. Lato and Stady to show which ones are open. You're welcome to change from where you're at right now, but that is what I did so that way it's easier to know which ones are vacant. Due to Ms. Ms. Lato and Stady being gone.
Okay. I think that this. There is some positions with the transportation that are critical that they get filled this evening. I understand there's some deliberations that are going on. Tomorrow or the next day, and they would need a member of Benton City to be there to vote.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to put in for the primary for the Ben Franklin Transit.
Okay.
And the alternate for the Tri-Tech.
Okay.
I would also respectfully request Ms. Wadsworth to be the alternate for the Ben Franklin Transit if she's available.
Okay, Jessica.
I'll accept that.
I'm sorry.
I will accept that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Councilman Mokler.
Yes.
Need to, there should have been a letter sent to you, Madam Mayor, about me vacating the mosquito control board. My work schedule does not allow me to attend the meetings as well as Benton County Emergency Management. I'll need to vacate both of those.
Okay. Which ones are you going to participate in then?
Mr. Mokler, what was the second one? I apologize.
Emergency management.
Thank you.
So have you selected two other committees?
I have not. At this time, it doesn't look like my work schedule allowed me to attend any of them.
That's quite a burden on. Some of the others.
I apologize. My family needs to eat.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I would accept the emergency management position for Mokler. Also, I do have another question. The Benton County Fire District Two. Would I be a conflict being employed by that organization?
I think it it probably would be.
Madam Mayor, may I have a floor?
Yes, you may.
So currently I have the changes of Benton Franklin Transit, Sandrato assigned alternate Wadsworth. And Tri-Tech alternate Sandrato. Correct?
Yes.
Which leaves open Benton Franklin Council of Governments TAC. Tri-Tech, Tri-Tech and assigned. Benton Franklin Solid Waste Management. Benton Frank, Benton County Fire District Number Two. Kiona Irrigation and Finance and Budget.
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I would be willing to do Benton Franklin County or Council of Government. And I could go ahead and do Tri-Tech as well with Mr. Sandrato being the alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor. This is Wadsworth, and I am more than happy to do the Benton County mosquito control.
Okay. Okay, so we still have a number of. Things that are not filled.
Madam Mayor, this is Bill Reed. I will take, I will take the finance and budget.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, the solid waste management, do you know what time they meet in the afternoon by chance?
I do not.
Madam Mayor, if I could have the floor just briefly.
Yes.
I know there was a question by Councilmember Reed. I don't. I don't recall the exact committee that he was referring to, but whether or not. His employment would be a conflict of interest. If you, if Councilmember Reed cared to, he could refer to. Forty-two twenty-three zero four zero. We just briefly discussed this a few minutes back. Forty-two twenty-three kind of outlines the ethical obligations of municipal officers. This would probably fall into the category of a remote interest. You know, that requires, in the event that that officer were to vote on that issue. I'm not saying that Councilmember Reed would need to do that, but if he did. The interest would need to be disclosed. In the official minutes of the meeting prior to formation of any agreement. And then thereafter, the governing body would authorize or approve or ratify that agreement. And then thereafter, the governing body would authorize or approve or ratify that agreement. So since that nature of that relationship is as an employee of that contract, it's that quote contracting party, this could be categorized as a remote interest.
So my question is, is would that be acceptable to accept that? Or, and, and not vote on any matters pertaining to that or not being on that committee at all? Just for clarification.
Right, so I think you, again, I think there's potential to serve on that committee, committee that the interest would need to be disclosed, which I think it has been here. In the event that, you know, contracts did come up affecting that entity, you know, obviously, it would be safest to refrain from any vote that would affect it. You know, I don't see this as necessarily a violation of forty-two, twenty-three by serving on that committee. The violation would occur again if a contract came up that would present itself as a conflict of interest in the nature of having to, on the one hand, decide what's best for the city and on the other way, and what's best for an individual's personal interests.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So we have you down then for Fire District Number Two.
Thank you.
It looks like we have Kiona Irrigation is the only one left now. Is that correct, Rebecca?
And Solid Waste.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'll take both of those as the primary.
Okay.
I would be more, more than happy to fill in when David can't.
On which one? Which one, Jessica?
On the Kiona Irrigation and the Ben Franklin Solid Waste Management.
Oh, okay, so both of them. Okay. Okay.
Okay, we can coordinate on these, Jessica. And if one of us can't make it, we'll deal with it.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I have a floor?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so now that we've got this filled out, councils, members, I will be typing this up and sending it out to you guys via email.
And could you please include the contact numbers and the times of the meetings with that so that they will have that? And one place.
I will find that information out.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I address City Clerk?
Yes.
Rebecca, what alternates aren't filled yet?
Alternate for Benton Franklin Council of Government Board, Benton Franklin Council of Government TAC, Good Roads Association, Bridges to River, and Finance and Budget. In the previous one from last year, not all of them had alternates.
Right. I, I think it's important that we have somebody that we can rely on and share information, especially when there's different terms involved. Because you need somebody who can take over.
Do you want to put yourself as an alternate for all of them?
Well, I can. I can. I just wanted to open it up to the rest of the council to think about, you know, you might not be able to make it most of the time, but if you could make one here or there to help somebody out if they have a work conflict or something, it would probably behoove us as a city to make sure that happens.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Ms. Gordon, you might want to consider being my alternate on the board since you're going to be on the TAC.
Yeah, I'd be.
Familiar with what projects are coming down.
Madam Mayor, if nobody else is taking the alternate, so you can put me down for them, and I'll do my best to try and attend those if somebody else can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Well, I think that's all for our regular agenda items. We will now take a short break and go into executive session. So the executive session, how long do you expect that to last?
I would say twenty minutes.
Okay, so we'll start with twenty minutes then and return then. Okay. Thank you, and the regular council meeting is adjourned. And we'll take a five-minute break and then go into the executive session. But we have to join the breakout rooms for those that are new. Okay. So we have no action after the executive session. So I will call the meeting to order so that we can have our final comments and adjourn.
Madam Mayor? May I have the floor, Madam Mayor?
Yes, you may.
I'm just wanting to remind anybody who's here or in council that Resolution twenty-two-one dash forty-one, the extension of shut-off and late fees is set to expire January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. So beginning in February, we will be commencing shut-offs and late notices, just a reminder.
I don't know that this is the place for it, but can we put it on the next agenda for discussion?
Oh, it, it won't, it isn't on here now.
No. But I, yes, sir, I can, I can put it on there for the next agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, are there any other council comments?
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
I would just like to take a moment to say that public service can sometimes be very difficult. And I would like to commend Jessica Wadsworth and Bill Reed for stepping forward and taking on that burden. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll echo that. Thank you very much, and especially taking on a number of the committees, and you too, Mr. Sandretto. So I appreciate that. Okay. Since we have no further business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, you know me, motion to adjourn.
Reed, second.
Okay, thank you, and good night.